Thanks for all your hard work.
All right, good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming to this meeting of the Orange County School Board tonight. We're so pleased to have you with us, and we always love recognizing our high-achieving students, and as importantly, the wonderful parents who have produced such wonderful role models in children in our public school system. Y'all should be very, very proud. We are going to, though, begin by asking everybody to please stand and bow your head for a moment of silence, and as you do, I would ask that you keep in mind the families and the community and the victims of the Southernland Springs shooting. We've had too many of these tragedies, I think we'd all agree, in our country of late, as you say your prayers, and then we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. So first, a moment of silence, please. Okay. All right, before we get into recognizing our brilliant students tonight, we'd like to mention first that this month is a month that we honor and recognize the contributions that our education support professionals make to public education. And we're doing that tonight because this month and National Education Support Personnel Day is coming up in two short weeks, on November 15th, and it's our only meeting of the month in which we can recognize these individuals who really keep our students safe, make sure that they have nutritional meals every day, get them to school safely each day, make sure that there is a bright, happy face at the front desk, provide the prayer professionals in the classroom, and do so many other critical tasks to make sure that we have a high-functioning school district, one in which we deliver a rigorous, high-quality education. It's lost on many folks, but y'all should know if you're not well-versed in our district as most are not, and we wouldn't expect you to be, that we have close to 24,000 employees in our district, and of course, close to 13,000 of those are teachers, but we also have 11,000 employees who provide all the services that our children and our families enjoy, and provide the scaffolding and the support structure that allows us to be such a successful district. So, we are joined today by the President of our Educational Support Personnel Association, or Union President, Mr. Ron Pollard. Ron, if you could stand up, let us, through you, recognize all of our many support personnel. And Ron, I would be remiss, I see you're surrounded, I think, by some of your colleagues on the Union Board. Can you also stand up if you're on the Executive Committee or Board, and let us recognize you as well? Thank you. And staff, any support personnel in the room.
Right. We're all yelling at Ali.
Welcome to my world, guys. I have eight coaches up here, so our new executive director is here as well. So, welcome, Michelle, and we really look forward to working with you. And we're blessed in this school district, and a lot of this is directly due to Ron and his team, and your Board of Directors, and your officers. We have wonderful relationships with our OESPA Union, and also with our CTA as well. And Ron, that's because of you, and we're very, very grateful for what you've brought to the table.
A wealth of information.
All right, wealth of information. So, let me, I'm going to go ahead and read into the record, if y'all will indulge me for a moment, the proclamation that we are adopting tonight. It reads, "Whereas, public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality for all. Whereas, education support professionals are integral to the education process. Whereas, education support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students. And whereas, education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our students and communities with care and with professionalism. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Orange County School Board of Orange County, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 15, 2017, as National Education Support Professionals' Day, and recognize and acknowledge the importance of educational support professionals in our public schools. Be it resolved." Congratulations again, and thank you, Ron. We also have quite a large audience tonight, and Jeff, thank you for making this possible. I'm about to recognize Mr. Pridmore here in a moment, but tonight, we are recognizing some of our brightest and most improved STEM students, as well as four amazing Orange County teachers in the film of STEM. And of course, everybody in this room knows what that means, but we have a lot of folks who watch. That means science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, which is a real focus of our district. They are our Orange County Public Schools STEM Alliance Award winners. The program recognizes teachers for their work in the classroom, and students for their performance and proficiency in higher-level science and math curriculum. The goal is to catch and recognize these students' successes early, then continue to monitor their progress, to make sure they are getting the rigor in science and math all the way through to their graduation. Eligibility begins in the 7th grade and goes through the 12th grade. During that time, the students must maintain good grades in math, science, and technology courses, and participate in STEM clubs and competitions. Here to honor the students, we welcome back Jeff Pridmore to present this year's awards. Mr. Pridmore serves as Chairman of the STEM Alliance of Central Florida. Jeff, thank you so much for providing this service. We're so glad to have you and what you provide for our students in our district, and I'd like to invite you to the lectern to say a few words, if you'd like, about the STEM Alliance program, and to present our awards for us. And you're tall, so I'm going to get to play with my favorite toy here.
I can do this.
We just got this a year or two ago, and I love getting to use it.
Oh, wow.
Look at that magic. Usually, I'm lowering it, Jeff.
I rarely do.
That's STEM at work.
Thanks so much for having us here today. I mean, it's, I'm here representing the STEM Alliance of Central Florida. The real thanks go to the folks that make up the alliance, which is a combination of industry, local industry, the schools themselves, and the government, not-for-profits in the area. And our goal is simple: raise money, do what we can to help promote STEM in the area so that students, A, get hooked on science, and follow through with it. And so, we do a number of things, we help put a number of programs in schools, like robotics programs, and some curriculum-based programs, but why I'm here today, and the most fun one, is we get to recognize and give out some awards for great achievement in STEM. So, my only comments there are, congratulations to the students for everything you've done. This is a very competitive process, and you were nominated by your teachers and the folks in your school, so you should be very proud of what you've done. And please, continue to keep up the great work. And I also want to put a shout-out to the parents. I know, you know, you're there, helping with homework and doing all of those things, and please keep it up, because it means so much to them as they continue to pursue, hopefully, go, you know, high school, and college, and careers in STEM education, because it's so important, and it's so important to Orange County. It's a big driver of the economic growth of this area. So, I'll get out of the way. Congratulations again. Let's go hand out some awards.
Good evening, Superintendent Jenkins, Chairman Vilsablet, and Board Members. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Jennifer Borges. I'm the STEM Program Specialist for Orange County Public Schools. We also have Meg Bowen, the Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction; Monica Emery, Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction; Rebecca Ray, Secondary Science Senior Administrator; and Pamela Rajadex, Secondary Math Senior Administrator. We are excited to award the 2017, sorry, 2016, 2017 STEM Alliance Awards to the following students. So if you can please come up and go ahead and get your award from our team right across the way, we'd greatly appreciate it. So, we're going to start with our 2016 STEM Alliance Most Improved Science Students, Ryan Hargerty.
And Jennifer, can we do it this way? After they get their awards, start down at the left end, and then just circle down in front of the school board table. We'd all like to shake their hands as well, as they come by.
Okay. Try that way.
Always needs to be the first.
I don't have that with me. I have it on my other sheet that they have. I can get it.
Congratulations.
I can get it.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We're just messing you all up.
So, Ryan was from Maitland Middle School, and Kevin was from Walker Middle School. Congratulations. Cashla is from Lockhart Middle School. Ashi Mendpara from Windy Ridge. Windy Ridge. Rania Sofni from Lake Nona High School. Daniel Lonza from Lake Nona High School. Kai Kamatsu from Windy Ridge. Michael Conti from Maitland Middle School. Nathan Cheng from Avalon Middle School. Fiba Matthew from Cypress Creek High School. Drew Gill from Lake Nona High School. And Julie Ing from University High School. The 2016-2017 STEM Alliance Most Improved Math Students: Jason Gay from Sunridge Middle Daniel Anduhan from Walker Middle School. Tin Lee from Sunridge Middle School. Caillou Bonin from Hunters Creek Middle School. Cassidy Velez from Lake Nona High School. The 2016-2017 STEM Alliance Most Outstanding Math Students: Andrew Wade from Sunridge Middle Belline Osloo from Avalon Middle School. Miley Thompson from Blankner K-8. Tavis Goldwire from Sunridge Middle School. Adam Siegel from Lake Nona High School. And Graham Jordan from Dr. Phillips High School. I now have the following pleasure of announcing the 2016-2017 STEM Alliance Science and Math Teachers of the Year. Our 2016-2017 STEM Alliance Elementary Science Teacher of the Year is Jessica Ben Scotter. Our 2016-2017 STEM Alliance Secondary Science Teacher of the Year, Sue Wang from University Our 2016-2017 STEM Alliance Elementary Math Teacher of the Year, Lauren Downing from And finally, our 2016-2017 STEM Alliance Secondary Math Teacher of the Year, Mary
All right, let's give one more round of applause for all our winners. I also want to echo something I said earlier this evening. None of these students would be here today accepting these awards if they didn't have a great base of support in their home. So, can I ask all the parents of these students today to stand, and let us recognize these wonderful parents? Yes, Dr. Jenkins.
And one very proud grandmother, who used to be our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Jan Pratt, is here as well. Stand up, Dr. Pratt.
Oh, hiding back there.
Well, I particularly want to thank the students as well. If you ever hear me at a school dedication, or even a graduation, I often say that the most important component, the most important people in our school district, and those who contribute perhaps the most to the quality of our school district, as much as we value our teachers, our support personnel, our principals, and even our parents, it's really students who are great role models for their fellow students. So, each and every one of you receiving this award tonight, you're wonderful role models for your fellow students, and you have no idea how important that is in the quality of the education that goes on in a school, the atmosphere in the school, and just the entire culture of a school. So, thank you for all you do for Orange County Public Schools. We're very, very proud of you. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Jenkins, I think we have one administrator to recognize tonight, and then we'll recess, and it is a school night, so you guys can all go home and get your studies done. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Board, we have one introduction. That is Kristy Phelps, who was Acting Assistant Principal at Lawton Childs. She will now be the official Assistant Principal at Lawton Childs Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and Chairman Sablet, for this wonderful opportunity. I look forward to being able to continue my work at Lawton Childs Elementary School with the community, along with Joey Cadel and my Principal, Dennis Gonzalez. I'd also like to thank my husband, Paul, and my two wonderful sons, Luke and David, for all their support. Thank you so much.
Well, Ms. Phelps, on behalf of the Board, congratulations. I always like to say, when we recognize newly-appointed administrators, that your appointment really signifies one very simple word, and that word is trust. It means that this Board and Administration, we trust your educational leadership abilities. It means that we trust your judgment, and perhaps most importantly, we trust you with our community's children. And for that, your family, and your colleagues, and your friends should be extremely proud of you tonight, as we are of you. Congratulations. So, with that, we are going to recess briefly, to allow you all to get back and go buy these kids an ice cream or a root beer.
Okay, we're ready to resume the business portion of our meeting. We have no strategic plan update tonight, so we'll begin with an announcement, that if there are any members of the public that wish to speak before the Board on any consent or non-consent item, you can do so by filling out a yellow card over here with Ms. McGill. You'll be given three minutes to address the Board, and if you have any time constraints, just let us know, and we'll be happy to work with you. Let's begin with the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
With that, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No, so the adoption, the agenda is adopted. We have public hearings tonight. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We actually have several policies for their final approval. As always noted, these have been worked shop previously, and gone through all of the steps for this final step by the Board. Items for Policy 3.01 through 3.10 were all reviewed in Cabinet on September 25th. Notification went to CTA on October 2nd. The publication date in our media was October 8th. Rural Development Workshops were October 17th, and then this final act on November 7th calls for the Board's final approval. Your Parliamentarian General Counsel has conceded they can be moved in one motion.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to adopt the policies?
Adoption.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll move on to our consent agenda items. We do have two speakers tonight with us. If you would like to come forward, we have, first, Carl Sousa to address the Board. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Madam Chairman, Dr. Jenkins, distinguished Board Members, thank you so much for this opportunity. I am here tonight to formally thank you on behalf of Mary Bridges, our Senior Director, myself, the Director of Psychological and Social Services, and our Senior Administrator, Ms. Lisa Coffey, for giving us this opportunity to formally thank you for recognizing School Psychology Week, which is next week, and also to recognize the valuable members of our team, our school psychologists. Throughout my nearly 25 years with Orange County Public Schools, I've had the privilege of working with many of the best in this field of professionals, who are dedicated to ensuring that all students attain success at the highest level. This evening, it is my honor and privilege to introduce to you one of these committed and talented individuals, Ms. Betty Garner. During her long and illustrious career, Ms. Garner has served students and families in various roles, including at the school, community, and school district setting. We're very fortunate to currently have Ms. Garner serve as our Lead School Psychologist for Student Services. Betty, would you please come to the podium and provide a brief overview of this year's School Psychology Week theme?
Thank you, Carl.
Welcome, Ms. Garner.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Yes, I was grateful that he didn't say how long I've been around, but it's been a really long time, and I'm really grateful for the districts I've worked with, for the opportunities I've been presented, and the growth opportunities. It's been a wonderful It's been a wonderful career, and be done with it in another two and a half years. Finally retired twice now, we'll say, from Memphis City Schools and now from here. Next week, November 13th through 17th, is National School Psychology Awareness Week. This is sponsored by the National Association of School Psychologists, so psychologists all across the country are celebrating this week. This year's theme is Power Up, Be a Positive Charge, and this aims to highlight the many ways that individual actions, large and small, that make positive connections can really spark positive change. The idea is that a small thing, you know, a word spoken to someone, a little piece of knowledge, extra effort, a kind gesture, can create connections that, for students, help them develop critical skills. They have to feel connected and bonded in order to really work for us and work with us. I want to talk a little bit about my passion, and that is prevention. I want you all to think a minute about what we know about heart disease, that medical model. Do we know the risk factors for heart disease? I think we probably all do. You know, a family history, your diet, your high cholesterol, and we also know those things that protect us from heart disease, right? Although knowledge doesn't always change behavior, we do know if we exercise more and watch what we eat and take the right medications, if we need to, we'll do better. Well, the same kind of thought has been put on to those ideas about what puts children at risk for problem behaviors. And this is something that about 15 years into my career, I thought, I've been seeing so many children with problems, and I want to know what we can do to stop this from happening, and that's when I got interested in prevention. Prevention research has shown us that certain conditions in a children's community, in their school, in their home, in their peer group, and even in the individual child, tend to put them at risk. We began to know what those things are after 20 years of really good prevention research. We also know that there are things that protect them from risk, that buffer that risk, and you may have heard some about risk and protective factors research. Bonding to a pro-social family, school, and peers, and clear standards of conduct for normal behavior protect against the development of problems down the road in the teenage years. School psychologists use this prevention science in our work every day. I love my job. I really do. I am passionate about identifying children who may be at risk for problems early and intervening in such a way to ensure success for these students. Yesterday, we heard our president state that the recent violence in Texas was a mental health issue. It is true that many mental health issues can be identified in children as early as kindergarten and first grade, that with proper screening, we can identify these children. So this is the passion. Let's intervene early to strengthen those skills that we know, such as emotional regulation, empathy, self-management, self-awareness, problem-solving. We know that if kids have those skills, they're less likely to have the problems down the road. If we can prevent some of the mental health illnesses and get early treatment, these children will succeed. Their attendance is better, their achievement is better. When bonds are strong and families, communities, and schools work together, our children are more successful, and school psychologists are ready to power up for this challenge. Thank you for honoring us this week and for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Garner, and thank you, Mr. Sousa. We know now more than ever what you do is vital to what we do. Ms. Gould.
Many of you know I'm involved with a not-for-profit that supports individuals who are now living successfully with severe mental illness and live well and are very productive members of society, but down to the person, prevention intervention, and having a qualified friend as early as possible in their life, almost like a mentor, not only a support system, changed the path of how they ended up where they are today. And some of them had the worst roads possible, and some didn't because of that early intervention. So I want to personally thank you for all the work that you do, because the earlier we can help a child with one of the most incestuous diseases out there, severe mental illness and depression, the trajectory of lives, many lives, can be changed. So thank you.
Thank you. Now we are moving on to the consent part of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Ms. Robinson, second. Second by Ms. Moore, Ms. Gordon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, show that it is passed unanimously. And we are on to the non-consent portion of our evening. We will begin with the election of the Vice Chair for the School Board of Orange County. We'll open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair? I'm sorry, Pam, I'm sorry, Pam. Ms. Gould.
I would like to nominate you, Ms. Vice Chair, for a second term as our Vice Chair for the 2016-17 year.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Ms. Robinson?
I'm sorry, 17-18. I'm, you're behind.
Thank you.
You beat me to the punch. You punched faster than me. I was going to highlight and also nominate Ms. Cobert to be our Vice Chair one more time.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Gordon?
Thank you. With that in mind, Madam Chair, I second that motion so that we may move on.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a nomination, and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, thank you. I'm honored to serve a second term. I very much enjoy this position and responsibility, and I will execute the office to the best of my ability in the future. Thank you. And the next item. Let's see. So we will now be recessing the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board and calling to order the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. The first action of the item, action item is requesting approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated July 25, 2017. Is there a motion to approve those? Thank you, Ms. Cadel, is motion. Second by Ms. Gordon. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the election of officers for the leasing corporation. The recommended slate of officers is attached to the agenda item on board docs. We need a motion to accept the recommended slate of officers, so moved by Ms. Robinson, second by Ms. Gould. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the approval of the resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $140 million aggregate principal and the execution of related documents with respect to refunding the Series 2-008B certificates of participation. I need a motion. It's moved by Ms. Gould, seconded by Ms. Cadel. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The last item is the approval of a resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $15 million aggregate principal and the execution of the related documents with respect to refunding the Series 2-008E certificates of participation. Is there a motion? So moved by Ms. Robinson, second by Ms. Moore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With no further business to address, I am adjourning the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation and reconvening the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board. Do we have a report by General Counsel?
Madam Chair, members of the board, just two items. First of all, you saw that there were no speakers in pre-agenda today, but that is because as a board, you approved the contract with Clark Schools, and I just want to give credit to our legal gurus, Ms. Vivian Kokotis, who's one of our attorneys that does our transactional work, as well as Ms. Sarah Corin, who both worked diligently, had to wade through a lot of issues and worked with our ESC department to get that approved. And then second of all, from the town of Eatonville, spoke to the mayor yesterday. The latest and the greatest is the developer is asking for an extension. We will be having conversations over the next few weeks. It's not the town's fault in any way, shape, or form. Some of the delays are attributable perhaps to Irma, but ultimately, the mayor is requesting on behalf of the town, and really, it's the developer who's asking the town to extend until March 15th. They wanted a later pushback, and the mayor said no later than March 15th, and I commend him for trying to stick this as quickly as possible to move forward. So I think they're going to be taking action at their board to approve that portion of it, but as you recall, there is an amendment to the amendment, like six amendments down. We'll be receiving that seventh or eighth amendment at the next board meeting. I will be having conversations with Tom Wilks, who's the attorney for the town in the next few weeks, and have that next, hopefully, last revised amendment before we close. And then with regard to the House Bill 7069 lawsuit, City of Miami, or the County of Miami-Dade, if you may have read in the paper, they just saw an article today, and I spoke to their General Counsel over the weekend, they are not going to be moving with any kind of haste. They're going to wait until January, but they have a quote-unquote "plan" in which they are going to absolutely positively file if they don't get resolution by January. Their view is that they, some other members went up and have been convinced that the legislature will take action, and as your letter stated before, if the legislature does follow through and take action and resolve the issues we've identified in the lawsuit, then we will withdraw. But otherwise, you know, if it's disappointment from the legislature, then they're expected to jump in. There is a meeting tomorrow night in Miami-Dade where they're going to workshop this issue and take more input, and then from there, who knows where they'll go, but their General Counsel was disappointed that they were not moving forward, but he, you know, expressed his frustration, but it was beyond his, it's his client's decision, so it's not, nothing he could really do or say. He's just following the advice of his, he's given the advice, he's following his client's intent, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Flynn, are you on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a question for Mr. Rodriguez. In regard to the Clark School, I just had just a question for the agreed-upon fee that would be shared between OCPS and Clark. Is that similar to other agreements that we've had with other entities? I mean, that amount, so if the student is there for so many hours and with OCPS, that amount is split? I mean, will these students be going there full-time, or are they, are we sharing those students?
Looking to see if Ms. Corin is in the back, but I, my understanding is they're going to be going there full-time. These are all students that are, I think, in the three, four, five range.
Right.
So it's before they have been enrolled in our school district, once they hit kindergarten, and obviously, they become our complete responsibility. They only have about six students, so, but yes, I understand the program is full-time. That was one of the requirements we had imposed early on. The fee, by the way, was established, but it will be on a prorata basis. If any students withdraw and they no longer receive services, then we will not pay the full amount, we'll expect a refund. And likewise, if any new students enroll, then those students, we pay on a prorata basis for the remaining days on the school year. So does that help answer your question?
I think so. I had, I was under the impression they had been enrolled in some of the OCPS programs already, some of the services. I mean, I might have.
For one of the parents in particular, that appeared to be the case early on, but I think they're now fully enrolled in that school. And by the way, they've been receiving services from the Clark School the entire year, even though they, you know, presented and had concerns about it, had no time that Clark not provided them services since August, to my knowledge. I mean, other than hurricane closures and other regular dates of closure, they were receiving services. They were just anxious to have a contract drawn up and understand what their gain would be.
So is that per-student amount, though? Is that comparable to?
It's comparable to, the other districts we saw were offering slightly less, but they also were housing the students in their school. So in other words, we're not providing them a room or a location or security or anything else, and that was one of the aspects we recognized in the negotiations with the Clark School.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Superintendent's report. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things to cover. First, I wanted to bring you an update on our students who have been relocating here from outside of the district due to the hurricanes that we suffered this past season. So a total of all of our children we've received due to hurricanes, including those from Houston and from the U.S. Virgin Islands and from Puerto Rico, is 2,127 currently. Of those, the majority, the vast majority, are citizens coming to us, bringing children to us from Puerto Rico. That number is right around 1,666. You might be interested to know, there are just a few, about 15 of the students that came to us that have already relocated further. After they got here, this was their landing spot. I'm pleased to say they did attend school while they were here, but then relocated further, and that means either decided to go back to Puerto Rico or to relatives, friends, or some other location in the U.S. Interestingly enough, you might be interested to hear, back when, as of October 21st, when the Council of Great City Schools surveyed districts, we were probably doubles, in some instances, three times as many students here as districts in Southern Florida. At that time, we were at 1,400, and Broward County, Fort Lauderdale area, was just over 600, and Miami-Dade was around 600 as well. And so Central Florida is clearly a favorite destination for citizens coming from Puerto Rico. Very pleased that we've been able to assist those students. I am also pleased to report, and we'll, if you queue up the video in just a few minutes, I'm also pleased to report, Dr. Williams and her team have been working diligently, and actually, we have 31 instructional employees from Puerto Rico and 20 classified employees from Puerto Rico. As they come here, we meet them at the airport, we take care of giving them information on registering their children, as well as on employment opportunities, and so our HR team has been diligent at manning that table at the airport, very appreciative for their hard work. Of those, we also have 24 pending employees in addition to those 51, including some bus drivers. We need bus drivers, and so we've got about 16 of those in process, scheduled in the process, and some bilingual paras as well that we can certainly use. Keep in mind, some of our children coming to us are biliterate, and others come to us. I met two at middle school students at Lake Nona this morning who do not speak English, and so we need to make sure we're hiring some additional support, biliterate paraprofessionals that can help support our children as well. Then I wanted to tell you just a couple, I emailed you all of the responses that we provided to constituents, our partners from Vamos PR, and wanted to at least highlight a couple of those in case the general public were curious about it as well. For instance, if they're wondering about our language line, that information should be available in every front office. Our multilingual services department provided posters and tents, and so if someone needs information about translation, it should be available in the front office. Additionally, we are, while we're excited that we had some, some of our schools during the hurricane season and just after the hurricane season had their initial parent leadership council meetings, some will be hosting them in November. But we have our district parent leadership council, as you noticed on question two on that provision as well, and we will post all of these answers on the multilingual services website and link it to our homepage. Thirdly, there was some question about whether or not we had any information regarding affordable housing and transportation. While that's out of our sandbox, we certainly cooperate with the county and gave them information regarding where we have schools with capacity. So if they're looking at where they might provide vouchers or access to affordable housing, they know where we already have capacity in our schools. That should save additional resources being spent to move portables or to provide portables when we know we have seats in certain areas. We're very hopeful that coordinating with the county will help get children into neighborhoods and into schools where there's already current capacity. Then there was a question about class size limits. So remember, there's a date certain, October 13th it was this year, where we have to meet class size. At that point, we did meet class size, so we don't have to be concerned about any kind of penalties as we take additional children in. You'll be happy to note, or you may recall, there's not another calculation for class size. October 13th is the date certain. So at that point, we were able to meet our class size requirements. We are in danger of no penalties, but we still want to advocate for that waiver because other districts may not have met their class size. We were pretty close in a couple of schools, but very pleased that we are not in any jeopardy. We were pretty close in a couple of schools, but very pleased that we are not in any jeopardy. We will still advocate, there ought to be a waiver if others for that October 13th date didn't quite meet class size. I think we will still ask for additional resources if they're made available, even if we don't make that 5% additional student enrollment. I think we would still make a request for the resources. What we're most anxious about is a provision for those high school seniors that have come here. If they are not biliterate, that they be allowed to use a concordance score, as we did for one student previously, for their SAT version from Puerto Rico, that they be allowed to use that for graduation purposes. Still very hopeful about that as well. Alternate survey period, again, we're not concerned about if we don't reach, 5% of our enrollment means we've got to have 10,000 additional students. Doesn't look like we're quite close to that. And so we're not really at all concerned or interested in the alternate survey period unless things change drastically. We have that opportunity, should it become a requirement. Very happy about our teachers. Again, their fees were waived by the state. That was provided by the Department of Education, normally a $75 fee, and that was waived. We've had several take advantage of that. And Connect Orange, the last question, Connect Orange is provided in Spanish or Haitian Creole or Portuguese for that matter, but upon registration, a parent has to identify that they want their communications in another language. And so anyone who says they're still hearing it in English and they need it in Spanish, they just need to go back and change their registration at their school, if that's a problem as well. And then I had one other letter. I wanted to read just a portion of it. Came from the Department of Army, U.S. Installment Management Command. It is from James Chuck Walls, who was the garrison manager. He says, "I would like to express my gratitude for the support Orange County Public Schools offered to military families displaced by Hurricane Irma and Maria. Your school system provided stellar service to our families. Your staff's caring and quick response made our families feel valued and the stress that they experienced after these catastrophic events was greatly mitigated. You exemplified the best attitude as well as efficient, competent service that could possibly have been experienced by our military-connected students throughout their transition into your school. Sincerely, James Chuck Walls." So thanks and kudos to all of the staff and team who really made the transition for our students, both military and coming from other cities and territories, much smoother coming here into Orange County. Almost done, Madam Chair. So we had two more recognitions, and I think, I see another trophy down the table, that someone insisted they should make the recognition for. So I let her have that one. I have two. I have two. One is Orange County Public Schools Research Network Funding, I'm sorry, Research Network Founding District for Character Lab. So if you remember, our big emphasis on grit this year for our students and all of our managers, all of our employees and managers especially, read the book Grit. Well, Angela Duckworth, Dr. Duckworth, was actually here in town because they are going to be doing work with our middle school students and with our staff and leading into our high school areas as well around grit. Not just grit, but other characters that we know will be helpful and critical to our young people, like curiosity as well. And so Character Lab is a nonprofit organization that is dedicated to helping students develop character skills, grit, motivation, persistence, and so on. It was founded by research and organizations, including Angela Duckworth. So Character Lab is also going to use their best research to help Orange County Public Schools as their founding district on how to best invest in students, characters that will help them be successful in school and in life. And so 21 of our middle schools are participating in this, in this particular project. You will hear more about it as the year goes on, but we are extremely excited. And the students at Lake Nona were just enthralled to hear all of that background information. We keep saying, our young people, adolescents can learn at much more rapid paces than our brains can learn. However, the frontal lobe, where there is executive function and decision-making, needs a little extra coaching. And so we are excited about, a lot of what they will do with our young people is to help them know their strengths and actually be able to self-regulate some of the characteristics that they know will make them successful. Very excited about that. The other prize actually says, 2017, the Learning Council Superhero Award presented to Orange County Public Schools. A superhero district with visionary leaders who push ever upward to higher heights of digital sophistication. So kudos to Rob Bixler, our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Vasquez, Dr. Jar, everyone behind our digital curriculum. We have been recognized nationally for being leaders and impacting and forging the way ahead in digital learning for our students. That's it, Madam Chair.
Outstanding. Well, you continue to make us proud and you have not only received these national awards, but received national recognition for your handling of our displaced students and families. And for that, we thank you. And I did hear a statistic yesterday that in the United States, we have approximately 6,000 who have arrived. And if we have over 2,000 here, that means that one-third of the students that have arrived in the nation are here in Orange County. And I just have to commend you and your staff for the handling of that.
I'm glad you mentioned the media coverage. That was a cue to roll the video, just a couple of things that happened this week for our students from Puerto Rico. Roll that video for us now.
U.S. citizens in need of basics, children who've left behind parents. Manuel Bohorquez now on how Orlando has opened its arms.
How many here have felt lonely?
In Karen Espino's classroom at Lake Nona Middle School, new students are still raw from fleeing storm ravage Puerto Rico. Here in the Orlando area, there are more than 1,300 new students from Puerto Rico. 13-year-old Joatis Laudiano arrived two weeks ago, living with her uncle and trying to find her footing.
What's it been like to be in a new place?
It's been a difficult one.
Difficult, she says. Difficult being away from her parents and older brother.
And just as-
Espino knows that pain all too well. She too is a hurricane evacuee. The school where she taught was heavily damaged. Now she's helping fill the increased demand for teachers, and she was recruited right off the plane at this help desk in Orlando's airport set up for displaced families. It's Friday Night Lights here in Orlando, and this high school has seen the biggest increase, more than 100 new students from Puerto Rico, and more are sure to come. Estimates suggest in the coming years, hundreds of thousands of Puerto Ricans may opt for a new life on the mainland.
An emotional day as Valencia College and the University of Central Florida gifted two Colonial High School seniors with surprise scholarships. They are two of 95 students now attending CHS following the storms.
And both these students, they're representative of just having grit. They're extremely resilient, but they're also academically focused.
I want to be a pediatrician and have my own clinic. That's my goal.
I'm so thankful. I really am.
Orange County Schools Superintendent Barbara Jenkins stopped by to congratulate both students and their families.
And members of the board, just one additional note, because I want people to understand we have a wide spectrum of students that are coming to us. Those girls with scholarships, they had full scholarships at home in Puerto Rico. Once they left Puerto Rico, all of that just seemed to dissolve. And so thanks to Valencia and UCF for making their dreams still come true. And just so you know, I mean, they're both loaded up with AP courses. They are no slackers academically. They have very rigorous schedules. They had rigorous schedules before they got to us. And so everywhere, everyone from students who may have exceptional needs to students who are absolutely brilliant, biliterate, or ELL students who are learning English, all of them that are coming to us from Puerto Rico, we are happy to serve. And I will tell you, in the back of my mind, I started, I just said to general counsel, I hope that large company that's trying to decide where they want to locate their second headquarters, I hope they consider that this is a very welcoming, a warm, engaging community where every sector of the community has been welcoming and helping our citizens come in and feel at home. And so I'm just hoping that Amazon pays attention to that.
Amen to that. And it's just another example of how we lead all of our students to success. And I'd also like to take a moment to welcome our new 51 newly hired employees as members of the family here at Orange County Public Schools. And we can't wait to receive the additional 24 pending. So Ms. Robinson?
I too just wanted to thank you, Superintendent, for your leadership on this. It's been amazing. And thank you for answering the many questions that the Vamos 4PR group has. I met with them several weeks ago, I guess it's been about a week and a half ago now. And they're just so thankful that they organized last spring. They didn't know this was going to happen, and they are just so thankful that they already were organized and had their act together and can be a resource to all the families that are coming to the mainland from Puerto Rico. So I thank you so much for that. I do have one question. I also want to add, before I ask the question, thank you so much too for the suggestion of helping to find mentors for the students that have come into our system that don't have parents with them, because we did have students come that don't have family or parents that came with them. So thank you for helping to locate that with Dr. Jar. That's awesome. One question on the language hotline registration. You said all the families need to do is register, go back to their home school and register to get on the hotline. Is that for not just receiving OCPS county-wide Connect Orange messages, but from their actual individual schools? So say, a principal from an elementary school sends out something on Sunday night, does it get translated to them between when the principal does it? Or does the prin, that's my question.
I believe, so let me double-check that for you. When they register their child for school is when they indicate the language they want their Connect Orange messages in. I believe that provision is for wherever the Connect Orange message is originating.
Okay.
I think it's in the system.
Because they're concerned, the Vamos 4PR concerns where they said last year, they gave me in particular one high school, because the principal happened to be bilingual last year, the principal would do the announcement every week on his Sunday night announcement in both. But this year, they have a new principal that isn't bilingual, so that has discontinued. So I just want to ask that question and see if we could get clarity.
Yeah, we'll get clarity on that. It may be a matter of folks didn't feel the need to have that provision in their registration because it was being provided. We can check it for you.
Okay. Thank you so, 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 so much. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Gould?
I'm going to actually let Ms. Flynn go. And then I'll come to you.
Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Mrs. Gould. I was just going to dovetail a little bit on what everyone else is saying about the influx of our new students. Just last week, the Osceola School Board and the Orange County School Board members, many of us met together to discuss with a couple of senators, state senators, just the complexities of what this influx of new students means to the districts. The increase in transportation in classes, we welcome them with open arms, but certainly there are some concerns that we have, and I think those have been addressed by the superintendents to the governor and to the Department of Education. I wanted to say, though, you know, this impacts not just the students coming in and impacts the students who are already there. I thought that was a comment that was of value. But I wanted to give a few more kudos to my grenadiers at the Colonial High School. A story that was told to me was a couple of students, a couple of female students came from the islands, I guess they were volleyball players, and the girls volleyball team only had a couple of more games, and they welcomed those girls onto their team with welcome, you know, open arms. You know, and those type of things can be very sort of exclusive or don't mess with the dynamics of our teams. And yet, the student body, they're welcoming those students and helping them to assimilate as quick as possible. One last thing, they did have over, we were at Celebration, there were some students that came to speak to the group, and they were from Puerto Rico. And we asked, what was the hardest thing? And one of the kids said, leaving everything, making friends. I think we just heard from our school psychologist, boy, do we need you for those services for the kids, because certainly not only are they having to deal with a whole new system, whole new set of standards, but just what they left behind and who they left behind and what their future holds. So I'm very proud to be a part of OCPS, and I thank this board, and I thank the superintendent and her staff for just the stellar way that we've planned to welcome these students and to our schools.
Well said, Ms. Flynn. Ms. Gould?
I also want to thank the superintendent and the staff for the work with the influx of these kids. And I wanted to clarify one more point. We do have children that are coming to continue their education here without their immediate family members. And a lot of that has to do with if the family members leave, they won't be able to qualify for FEMA. So they are going to try to rebuild. So it's a very complicated situation, and we need to support them. And now I'm going to shift, because the superintendent did refer to another trophy that I'm sure has been on the camera a couple of times this evening. And when you talk about grit, our board has grit, and so does our general counsel, who all joined together to win the West Orange Chamber karaoke clash against other governing bodies. So it, it was, no. That's only for us. You know, it was a great opportunity for us to do something completely unusual together that was a great team building, but it was also a wonderful camaraderie between multiple governing bodies, whether you're talking about state senators or the county commission. And I really appreciate the West Orange Chamber for hosting such an event and allowing us to, not necessarily sing well, but we had great choreography. And we sold it and won. So again, thank you to my fellow board members for participating in this, and we have to defend our championship in 2019. So I expect you all back, no matter where you are, to come and defend our championship. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. I think it was an exercise in showing the public and the other government entities how well we do get along and what a great team we are. So, absolutely. Ms. Robinson?
I just want to say, it was a wonderful team-building exercise, and thank you, Ms. Gould, for encouraging all of us to do it as a group. I know you've done it by yourself for the last few years, and thank you for encouraging all of us to join with you. When you have to learn dance moves and move in the same direction, the same, you have to work together as a team. What else, what other team-building exercise would be better than that than making us all, and did we look fabulous with Woody out in front? Woody and his jump in the air split, that was just amazing. And he did it all with his, with his long-sleeved shirt and tie under his football jersey. Didn't lose the tie even. So anyway, so much fun. Thank you for encouraging us to join in the fun.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez was quite the good sport, and I know members of his staff did not believe it when I told them that there was a spin and a split involved. But I think that's what put us over the edge to win.
I think it was a collective gasp.
We are moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Budget, Ms. Cadel?
No, but I have a policy issue.
Okay. Communications, Ms. Gould?
No report.
Okay. Community Action Board, Ms. Gould, no report. Legislative, Ms. Flynn?
No report, other than I'm going to schedule a meeting soon of the Legislative Committee so that we can just start getting our ducks in a row for what's to come. Thank you.
All right. The next item would be policy-level issues the board would like to agenda or discuss. Ms. Cadel?
I don't know if it's a policy, policy issue, but when you were talking about the Character Lab and what we're doing, what we're going to be doing in middle schools, when we went out to Celebration High School, they had banners that were kind of character building things. And it was really kind of refreshing driving in, seeing them. And so I don't know as if we're looking at this, if there's some way that we could put some, figure out what those character banners are that would tie to this and kind of put it there. So not only the students would see it, but the parents who drive their children to school would see it too and know that this is something that we're working on. So it could be like, and they were those, they were the ones that just kind of stuck in the ground and it waved in the- in the ground and it waved in the, it waved in the wind. But it was, you know, it, we all commented about how nice those banners looked coming in, so that might be a tie-in.
Very good. Is there any additional discussion by school board members this evening? Then for the good of the district, we're adjourned.